Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. Hope everyone's had a good summer and everyone's ready for their kids to go back to school in a few weeks. The Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Public participation opportunities will be available at the beginning and end of this meeting. And as stated in board policy, no person shall speak for more than three minutes. And each period of public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. If you have any questions or concerns regarding matters on the consent agenda, through the items for discussion and action, which are items one through four, it may be important for you to utilize the first public participation opportunity. Of course, you may also send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, which is B O E at FarmingdaleSchools.org. Questions will be shared with members of the central administration administrative team, who will respond in a timely fashion. During special meetings, it is the policy of the Board of Education that public participation is limited to topics on the agenda only. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire and/or you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. Please use the nearest exit, which is in the back of the room to the right. And if you could, please now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I turn the mic over to Mr. Defendini for the superintendent's update, I just want to let everyone know that, as you know, there is one Board of Education seat that is open. And we are in the process of letting people know the process for interviewing. We have notified certain people. We will continue to notify people for that process. And we anticipate interviewing a number of individuals for the open seat early next month. And now I'll turn the mic over to Mr. Defendini for his superintendent update.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Morales. Before I get into the work that we've been doing over the summer, right, all the preparations that we've made in order to get ready for our students' arrival in a few weeks, all the things that we're excited for as we do open up what would be a far more normal school year, you know, in the upcoming school year than we've seen in the last few. I want to pay special recognition, right? So every once in a while, a very special person comes into our world, right, our education world. And we rely upon, in many instances, the services of outside people to provide the safest, most appropriate environment for our students. This evening, we have a very special person in the crowd that we're going to pay special recognition to. Before I get to that, I'd like to welcome a few of our officers that are here this evening with us. The relationship that we have with our school resource officers in Suffolk County and the POP officers on the Nassau County side is vital for us to be as safe as we possibly can. I can speak specifically to the people that are in the room today. They are unbelievably available to us, meaning at a moment's notice that we need to reach out because we need to connect with a school resource officer for any particular purpose. They are there. So I'd like to welcome Kelly Abriano, Dara Karamanek Broyles, Police Officer Bizdek, Police Officer Giordano, and Police Officer Drummond. And I'd like to welcome and thank POP Officers Bromin and POP Officers Camerata for their service to our schools. You make us and you make our students safer with what you do every single day. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you give of yourself every day to do that. But I'm turning my attention to a very specific person. Mrs. Genie Osias. Mrs. Genie Osias, a police officer that I've been working with for the better part of a decade, goes above and beyond. We say that a lot, right? Those words can be sort of used cheaply, right? Goes above and beyond. She is somebody who is available twenty-four hours a day. There are moments where something happens in the middle of the night that we need to have access to somebody. She has given me her cellphone. I can literally text her at two-thirty in the morning. And by two-thirty-five, I have a response back. By two-forty-five, she's on the road. And by three o'clock, we're talking back and forth about something that's going on. That's the kind of person that she is. She's thoughtful. She's smart. She's been a part of our drills. We pride ourselves here in Farmingdale on the way in which we prepare for safety circumstances. And a lot of that is based upon the feedback that we've received over the years. The person behind a lot of that feedback is Genie Osias. She's been our partner at every single step of the way. I am going to miss you terribly, Genie, and what you've done for us here in Farmingdale terribly. I invite you to come up so we can please pay you the honor and the recognition that you deserve for your years of service here in Farmingdale. I'm going to read the plaque before I'm going to give her a hug. To Genie Osias with sincere thanks and grateful appreciation for your years of service as a school resource officer for the Farmingdale School District, presented today by the Farmingdale School District Board of Education 2022. Congratulations, Genie. Thank you again, Genie. Can not speak enough about post-tragic incidents that have occurred in recent history and how you were there every step of the way for us, supporting us. Thank you so much, Genie. So a few other pieces of good news as we ready ourselves for the arrival of our students on the first day. First, Farmingdale High School parking lot again is getting renovated. We had to move our student orientation over at Farmingdale High School back a little bit because there's some electrical work that needs to happen under the ground before we pave over the surface. But again, that work is underway and we're very confident that that will be done before the start of school. Work over at Howitt Middle School also is pretty significant. We spoke at length with the Board of Education about some of the plans, about the budget for the upcoming school year and how that involves support teams here at the middle school. So we have some new spaces that we're building in order to make sure that we provide the professional staff the opportunity to have a collaborative space that they can work in with our children as we prepare for the upcoming school year. So again, that work, construction-wise, is well underway. Really good news, our aquatic center is open. So we were able to have a soft opening for our student athletes this past Monday. Our athletes were able to gain access to the pool. It was an unbelievable moment, I think, for our athletes, for their parents. I know many of you, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be there. I think the expression on the students' faces when they walked in that facility and they saw the pool that they were going to have access to was worth every bit of aggravation. And kid you not, this was a very difficult project because of all of the different holdups that we had along the way. Made every bit of the work that we put into place there worth it. Good news about the aquatic center. And again, for those community members that might be looking for more access to the aquatic center, look no further than going on the district's website, FarmingdaleSchools.org. If you go to the continuing community education section of the website, you'll see a whole program of program opportunities that'll be available for our community. Things like aqua aerobics, which we'll now be able to make available, a parent-in-me classes that'll be available to our community, scuba diving, which will be made available to our community. So we have layers of classes that we're going to be able to offer. And the vision of that aquatic center is, you know, from birth to the end. You know, we want to make sure that everybody has access to that facility, no matter where their age is. We wanted our community to get access to that pool, and they will through the variety of programs that we have available. And it's going to be something that's going to build upon itself, right? We're going to continue to be able to offer additional programs based upon insight that we get from the people who are using the facility or others from the outside that give us some additional ideas. So we're excited. The groundbreaking ceremony or the official opening for the community is going to be on September eighth at three o'clock in front of the facility. All are welcome to attend. That's going to be a pretty special event, too. We have swimmers and former athletes from around the country who are going to be flying in for that groundbreaking event. We may even have a few special visitors from the U.S. Olympic team that might actually be coming out for that as well because we do believe that they're going to be in the area on that particular day. So it is exciting. It's been a long stretch. COVID and everything else caused a lot of challenges for us, but we are there. It is open. It's in final form. And on September eighth, we begin a new generation here in Farmingdale of swimmers and aquatic athletes. I just want to offer special thanks to our support staff, custodians, our cleaners, our grounds, our maintenance, our secretaries, who've been working all summer long, getting the buildings ready. They look fantastic. The Board of Education has walkarounds coming up at the end of the month in order for you to be able to take a look at the readiness of our buildings. But I'm very proud of the amount of effort that was put into making sure that our buildings look great for the start of school when students arrive, as well as all of the different people that were involved in our summer programs, right? It seems like that we should be off for the summer, but if you walk around our buildings, they are very busy. Farmingdale High School plays host to our summer school. Our Albany Avenue plays host to our extended school year program that we have for our special education learners. Northside, Woodward Parkway, Howitt Middle School is playing host to our literacy program that we've built a few years ago that's continuing to grow. And a whole bunch of other types of screenings and programs that are available at our school. So but thanks to all the people that worked over the summer to get our kids in the best place that they can for their return to school in September. A couple of other just quick things. The UPK lottery took place at the middle of last week with thanks to Mrs. Maloney and her team for creating what I thought was a tremendously transparent process. We had parents that were actually there, that were able to see the process live, as well as people that were able to view it online. Thirty-six spots were available for a full-day program. Those spots, we do believe at the end, will be fully taken by a mix of the thirty-six people that were polled, as well as we got pretty deep into the reserves. So we pulled ten other reserve, and we're probably going to get pretty deep into those ten. But at the end of the day, we will have a full program at two of our schools, Northside and Albany Avenue, for the upcoming school year. So again, with thanks to Mrs. Maloney for her work over the summer, getting that ready. And the last piece that I have is just, again, with thanks and gratitude, I guess, to all the different people that worked so hard last year in getting ourselves to the end of the school year and in preparation for the upcoming school year. We just got information from the state, and we are preparing for what will feel in almost all instances like a normal opening. A lot of the tension, a lot of the dramatic conflicting situations that we had to deal with for the start of school for the last couple of years. It did cause a sense of tension. It did cause a sense of apprehension for a variety of reasons. And a lot of that is resolved. Most of the people that I've been talking to and their teachers all over the schools are very excited to come back. Had a chance to be a part of the orientation program here at the middle school. The middle schoolers who are in sixth grade are excited to be here and excited to be back. So we are very excited to have what is going to be feeling very much so like a regular opening as it had been in years past. We're very excited about that. Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions of Mr. Defendini? Thanks again. At this time, we'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation session. Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the microphone.
Eric Morrow, twenty-five Dale Drive, Farmingdale. Happy summer. Just quick note I wanted to say, I can't be here long. I know that we have a board of ed spot open and that you guys are opening it up to a meeting on the sixth for everyone to basically participate. But I wanted to know some of the parameters and what the style of the meeting was kind of centered around, whatever you could let us know. So that way, we understand what you're looking for in order to replace Mario's seat. I also just wanted to say publicly on record, I believe that Parsa was the last person with the most votes that wasn't elected. I firmly believe that he should be the one that is put into the spot. I just wanted to say that on record because I believe that he would be a valued addition to this Board of Ed. And I think that it would help in that regard. So again, what are the parameters for that meeting? And then why aren't we just going with, you know, what the town voted for? Because now all these people that didn't run, didn't put boards up, weren't interested in May, you're just going to get to appoint somebody for the year. It seems, you know, a little weird.
The parameters are basically each person will be subjected to an interview by the board members here, including Arlene, who's not here today, and Kathy Lively as well. We'll ask each candidate the exact same question. Excuse me, I'm getting over a little illness here. So each person will be given an opportunity to answer the same questions from each of the board members. Nothing's going to be different. Every candidate is asked the exact same question. At the end of that process, we will, the Board will in turn select one candidate who we feel is best served to represent not only themselves as board members, but represent the community. As far as your comment about last year's election, we took everything into account. You know, we are following the law. What we're doing is completely lawful. It's in accordance with the state laws. It's also mindful, it's important to be mindful of the fact that while people did vote, you know, you could look at that another way and say that it was an overwhelming two-to-one majority in terms of who was voted for. That also wouldn't be fair to Parsa or to Nicole, to whomever else ran the last time. We wanted to make sure that this was as, we want to make sure that it has as much fidelity as possible, which is why we opened it to all the community. You know, they had to meet certain parameters, obviously, in terms of being able to read and write and things of that nature. But short of that, we are open to anyone stepping forward. We don't hold it against them for not running last year, nor do we say that because someone ran last year, they are one step ahead. So we're trying to keep it as fair and as open as possible. And we in turn will have as open minds as we can because, again, we want to ensure that whoever is selected is best served to represent this community going forward. That person would also have to run again next year because of the way that the law is. So they're not going to be in the seat for three years. They would be in the seat and then they'd have to run again in May. And the way the process would work is that in May, there are two open seats, myself and Arlene. So we would run if we want. Those two seats are open. The person that we select is also running. And the way that would happen was the top two vote-getters would have three-year terms. The person that comes in third would have to run again the following year because that would be the conclusion of Mario's term.
Very fair. I just, I would, what I don't want to happen in open line of communication, you guys have definitely stepped up since those elections. Communication's been great. We're doing well, right? So what I don't want is a town divided based on perceived biases. So that election got pretty contentious at a certain point. I think everything cooled down. And now at this point, I just want to make sure that the five people, six people up there that are looking at this, it doesn't seem like a biasy that you guys are picking, you know, the person you want in there. And just knowing that Parsa wanted it so much and he was the third vote-getter. In my mind, I'm just putting my word out there. I'm letting you guys know as a person that you know has the pulse of this community, please give it a really good thought. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow, I just want to, just a correction on something Mr. Morales said. The person who gets appointed does not have to seek reelection
Right, right.
in May. So I mean, if they so choose, they would have to then do that at that point.
Right.
But at that point, you can have ten people running, you know.
Hundred percent.
So I just want clarity on that. Thank you.
But thank you.
Hi, Tom Alessandro. My address is on file. Just want to reiterate what Eric said. I think he does have the pulse of Farmingdale. I think it is important not to just dismiss the one-third of the electorate that voted for Parsa. I think it's important that you fairly and go obviously lawfully do your due diligence. But I do think that it's important to understand that the whole community wants to be properly represented. And I know you didn't necessarily mention the criteria that you're exactly looking for. I think having a diversity of thought, diversity is obviously something that we always drive for. And I think having a diversity of thought on the Board is extremely important and will continue to help make us grow. So I just wanted to, again, go on the record to state that. Thank you.
I will say again, one hundred percent, you know, that's what we're trying to do here. And you all have our assurance. I'm not speaking just for myself. I'm speaking for all the board members, that everyone's coming in with a clean slate. No one's coming in with a preconceived notion. We're not going to interview somebody just for the sake of giving them an interview. Anyone that we interview is a viable candidate. We will give extreme thought and a lot of thoughtfulness to everyone that comes forward. It takes a lot of courage and it takes a lot of wherewithal to want to even put yourself in that position. We understand that. We understand from a firsthand perspective what this job entails, what this volunteer position entails. But you have our absolute assurance, you and everyone else that may be concerned about this. This will be a very clean process. Everyone's got an open shot. Everyone's got the same, everyone's lined up at the same level. So no one's ahead or behind anyone else. We wanted to ensure that because we understand what the community thinks, what the community feels. And the last thing that anyone up here wants is a feeling that there's a bias or a preconceived notion about someone that is more or less deserving. You have our assurance. I could turn everyone's mic on. They would say the same thing. The last thing we want is for anyone to feel that this was an unfair or biased process. It will not be. You have our assurance of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for the first public session? Okay, thank you both gentlemen for coming forward and for your comments. I call for motion now to approve the June twenty-nine board minutes.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was Kathy Lively remotely. Motion carries. I call for motion to approve the minutes of the July thirteen meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for motion now to approve the minutes of the July thirteen organizational meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two organizational meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes. Thank you.
I call for motion to approve the minutes of the August two, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August second, two thousand twenty-two special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for motion to approve the minutes of the August eight, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August eighth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for motion to approve the minutes of the August nine, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August ninth, two thousand
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 9, 2022 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Mr. Morales, the correspondence was basically the letters we received from community members interested in being on the Board of Education. That was it.
Thank you very much. Are there any committee reports from the Board for this month?
No.
I'll just say that Farmdale P L Flag Football is about to start up again in a few weeks. We're looking forward to a great season with great parents, great coaches, a lot of volunteers. It takes a lot of work. If you guys knew what goes on behind the scenes to get this program up and running, it's an amazing program. I know, Eric, I know you've been involved with the program in the past. It takes a lot of effort. It takes a village is the same, and this definitely is one. So we're looking forward to another great season of flag football. And we'll be playing ball in a few weeks. Ken, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1A through H, 2A through G, and 3A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Yes, yep.
Staff members. So you might not know it. We have some staff members in the audience. That little moment right there was your big moment. Kind of went by and you probably didn't even realize it. But within the consent agenda was the approval of personnel motions. We have a few people that I'd like to introduce to the Board of Education who are here this evening. We have, and if you could just stand and wave to the Board just to introduce yourselves. We have in the audience tonight Caitlin Bragg, Solzhenits Memorial, Special Education. Monica Candela, Howitt, Special Education. Janine Defava, I'm sorry, Howitt, Special Education, grade six. Jenna Master-Pasqua, Albany Avenue, Special Education. Kim Nickel, Farmdale High School, Special Education. We have Chris Patronagio, Assistant Principal, Farmdale High School. We have Nicole Shea, Howitt, Reading. We have Carla Stillwell, Farmdale High School, Assistant Principal. We have Eve Zanchelli, Solzhenits Memorial, Special Education. And last, but certainly not least, we have Joanne Giordano, who's going to be filling a temporary leave replacement position for Anjene Smar over at Solzhenits Memorial as an Assistant Principal. Congratulations to all of you. Welcome to the family, and we look forward to supporting you in your journey to becoming the absolute best that you could be for our students. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Sure.
Congrats and welcome to all of our new family members. Can I have a motion now to approve the setting of the tax levy?
Sure. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Farmingdale Union Free School District authorizes the setting of the tax levy for the 2022-2023 school year, subject to adjustments based upon the application of the final equalization rates and assessed values from the Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, and Town of Babylon, Suffolk County.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Tonight, this resolution gives us the authorization to set the tax levy for the 22-23 school year. Specifically, it gives us the authorization to notify both the Town of Babylon and the Town of Oyster Bay of their respective tax levy amounts. We are still waiting on some final numbers from Nassau County and the final equalization rates from the state. Once that's all transmitted to the district, I will be able to complete the tax rate calculation, and I will update the Board and the community at a later date, a later Board meeting. Does the Board have any questions regarding this?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Motisi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion now to approve the tax exemptions for alternative veterans?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for alternative veterans for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Tonight, the Board will have the opportunity to act on several resolutions which could provide tax savings to certain residents in the 23-24 school year. Each exemption is unique and has its own set of requirements which must be met in order to receive it. Once the savings are achieved by an individual taxpayer, it is then redistributed amongst the other taxpayers in a community. This first one is called the Alternative Veterans Exemption, which is broken down into basically three components with an option to provide these three components to Gold Star Parents, which is discussed next. The first category is noncombat, which is up to a 15% reduction up to the maximum amount set by law. Those that were in a conflict zone, which is a 25% reduction up to a maximum amount set by law, and disabled veterans, 75% reduction up to a maximum amount set by law. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Motisi? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for Gold Star Parents?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for Gold Star Parents for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you. Parents of a veteran who was killed in the line of duty may be eligible to receive some of the benefits that were, the tax savings exemption benefits that were, would have been afforded to the veteran. And this resolution allows us to allow that exemption in the community.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Motisi? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for cooperative corporation veterans?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for cooperative corporation veterans for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you. This one extends the same benefit to cooperative corporation veterans, same as the previous two exemptions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for alternative veterans?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for alternative veterans for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
This exemption is for veterans who served in the U.S. Armed Forces between September 2nd, 1945, and December 26, 1991. These veterans would receive a 15% reduction up to a maximum amount designated under law.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for Cold War veterans?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for Cold War veterans for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
We already voted on this, didn't we?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
That was the previous one that I just read.
Yeah. That was my bad. Sorry, everybody. We don't need to act on it then, right? Because we already voted. Moving right along here. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for persons with disabilities and limited income?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for persons with disabilities and limited income for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you. This exemption is very similar to the exemption we're about to discuss next, which is the senior citizens, in terms of income eligibility and residency requirements, with the exception that there is no age requirement for disabilities and limited income exemption. The amount of this reduction is based on a sliding scale between 5% and 50% of their home's assessed value.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for senior citizens with limited income?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for senior citizens with limited income for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Farmingdale residents aged 65 or older will have an opportunity to receive an exemption based on their annual income and whether or not they meet certain other criteria. The amount of this reduction is based on a sliding scale, again, from 5% to 50% of their home's assessed value.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers with five years of service?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers with five years of service for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you. There are three separate exemptions tonight for these residents that equal, that can equal up to 10% of their home's assessed value. This first one is related to volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers with five years of experience. These are volunteer firefighters or ambulance workers in good standing who have served at least five years and live within the boundaries of the Farmdale School District.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the tax exemptions for firefighters and ambulance workers with unremarried spouses of those killed in the line of duty?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for firefighters and ambulance workers with unremarried spouses of those killed in the line of duty for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
This resolution allows the unremarried spouses of those volunteer firefighters and/or ambulance workers in good standing who were killed in the line of duty.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers with unremarried spouses of deceased members.
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt the attached property tax exemption motion for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers with unremarried spouses of deceased members for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Mr. Motisi?
Similar to the previous exemption, this one applies again to unremarried deceased, unremarried spouses of volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers who were in good standing and who were deceased but not killed in the line of duty.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to open the meeting now for the second public participation session. Again, please state your name and address clearly when stepping up to the microphone. Okay. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for your time here this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming down, everybody. Have a good rest of your summer, and we'll see everybody in the school year next month.
Have a great evening. Thank you.